I'd like to call the Orders of Mount Pleasant Public Schools Board of Education Special Meeting on October 10, 2022 at 6:30 PM in the Mount Pleasant High School cafeteria. This meeting of the Mount Pleasant Public Schools Board of Education is a meeting conducted in the public, but is not a meeting of the public. There's time for public participation during the meeting as indicated in the agenda. The Board highly values public comment and input. However, the Board meeting format is designed to facilitate this evening's agenda. Board members will not engage in conversation with speakers or respond to questions. As a courtesy, please silence your cell phones and stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The Indigenous way of acknowledgement statement. Mount Pleasant Public Schools is honored to acknowledge the Nishnabe people whose tradition and they are gathered on today. To recognize the Nishnabe people and their ancestral land is our expression of gratitude and appreciation in a way of honoring the Indigenous people who have been living and working on this land since our memorial, and whose land on which the Saginaw-Chippewa Indian tribe have resided and who have continued to reside on for centuries. We feel it is important to understand the long-standing history of this land and to seek to understand our place within that history. And then today, in honor of the Indigenous People's Day, we lean has something in addition to you.
Thank you, Amy. This is Famwele Wilewes Wayes, who is our Project to Work Counselor at the Goyurt School. And she put this together for us. As educators, protectors, and allies, it is important that we honor the history and culture that our students bring with them to school every day. One of the many beautiful facets of Native Indigenous cultures is the sacredness in which children are held. For these cultures, children are the embodiment of the dreams of generations before them, and they carry our hopes into the future. On Monday, October 10, 2022, we get an opportunity to support and advocate for our Native Indigenous youth on Indigenous People's Day. This day celebrated on the second Monday of October in the United States in lieu of Columbus Day. The concept of replacing Columbus Day with Indigenous People's Day was first presented in 1977 at the International Conference on Discrimination Against Indigenous Populations in the Americas. In 1992, 500 years after Columbus first set foot in the Americas, numerous other U.S. states and cities adopted Indigenous People's Day as an official holiday. Indigenous People's Day strives to honor the past, present, and future of Native Indigenous peoples across the United States, and it aims to acknowledge the detrimental legacy of colonialism. Historically, the consequences of colonialism devastated scores of Native Indigenous communities, and those consequences continue to have negative impacts today. However, the overarching purpose of Indigenous People's Day is to move beyond only highlighting the narrative of oppression. This holiday gives us the opportunity to take intentional time to honor the histories, cultures, contributions, and resilience of contemporary Native Indigenous peoples in accurate and authentic ways. Thank you.
Next is Volka. Shida Raffi?
Here.
Jessica Joligan?
Here.
Willy Pango?
Here.
Amy Bond?
Here.
Timo DeFer?
Here.
Dana Conklin?
Here.
Next is the approval of the agenda. Does anyone have anything we'd like to add or change? Next is the approval of the minutes. The approval of the minutes for Actel Withard?
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Next, we move to the citizens' request to address the Board on any agenda or non-agenda item. Please approach when your name is called. Please approach the microphone, and you'll have your three minutes. Re Mokenberg.
Good evening. Re Mokenberg from Mount Pleasant. Tonight, I stand here and I represent myself, although I will discuss a little bit about the resolution of the Mount Pleasant Board of Education that was turned down by the board. So today, I sent you over an email. And in that email, there was a video clip. I know that many of you here tonight feel as though I'm a one voice, and that I speak for myself. However, if you've noticed around town, more people standing up, and much more than one voice. And so I ask that when I tell you there are many people that have brought this to my attention, that you believe there are many people that have brought this to my attention. So I put this on a poster board, just to help explain it a little bit further. Tonight, there is a gentleman lived here by the name of Tyler Morkan. And it was brought to my attention that he has friends with the book Sex Predator, Eric Roman. Eric Roman is the one that I know many of you would like to not acknowledge, and you've not said anything about what's happened with them at the school, but it did happen. And many parents are concerned. And there are parents that have called me crying about this because their students were with Eric Roman. So with that said, there's a few different public providers that are used. But they've communicated, and they're friends, and they've actually communicated about the school board candidates. That is very concerning, that somebody sitting up here tonight is communicating with the book Sex Predator. And I don't feel like I need to give explanation about why that's concerning. But if that's somebody that you put on this board, parents will be very alarmed more than they are. So not only do they communicate, but Eric Roman likes to push for Tyler Morkan, who's also running with Willy. And Tyler loves that. And I know this can be laughable, almost because of social media, but to run for a school board position and to be friends and communicate openly with a sex predator that has been booked on charges and is awaiting his court trial is just not appropriate. And that does not seem that somebody like that on this board would have any interest for the safety of the children. And I don't believe that if the Board makes the decision to put Tyler Morkan into this appointancy, I don't feel that you have the safety of the children at heart. So I ask you, please consider this when you look at all the people up here tonight to be interviewed. Thank you.
Moving on, we go to the Board interviews. So the way that we are going to receive is each one of us will read an interview question. We will start with you, Christina, for the first question. The second question will then start with Melissa, but you will have the chance to go across. And each of you will answer the question at a time. You've all been given the question before you. So if this is not the first time that you are here or seeing that, is there any questions that you have on the end of this?
I do. Sorry, this is Melissa Isaac. You're gonna ask the question one, then I'll get question two.
Sorry, we're gonna ask question one, and have Christina, then Melissa, then Rosie, then Tyler, then you. All the question one. And then question two will be asked, and we'll be starting with you, Melissa. And then going with Rosie, Tyler. And so that way, everyone has a chance to be the first person on a question. I'm sorry, thank you. Are there any other questions? Christina, what qualities, skills, and experiences do you bring to the Board?
Oh, I have two children, and I apologize for not coming up in the public address, but... I have two children that are Mount Pleasant Public Schools. I have a 14-year-old and a 9-year-old. One with significant health conditions and one that is autistic. So I've been through both IEP programs, plus side of work plans, plus open communication with the teachers. I've worked personally and professionally for Mid-Michigan Health, now known as Mid-Michigan Health, since the age of 14. And so that should show my dedication. When I'm involved in something, I stick with it. Throughout all of my degrees, I've continued to work full-time. I've worked in a multitude of positions, including general staff and labor to leadership, and most recently, I'm a medical professional provider on the intensive care unit as a doctor at a personal practice. For the last four years, I've worked as an internal medicine practitioner. My healthcare experience has taught me and writing components that are necessary in education, as well as including the care of the child of trauma, recognition of trauma, abuse, and neglect, spiritual care, psychological care and well-being, sex and human trafficking recognition, crisis prevention intervention, sexual education training, gender dysphoria training, gender equality training, substance abuse training, and most significantly, developmental milestones for children. Throughout healthcare, we face a multitude of spiritual, cultural, ethical, criminal, controversial, and deeply impacting matters. Decisions we make can have a lasting impact on every component of a person's life. We must, at all times in healthcare, remain firm that we are doing what is best for the patient at all times. There are times that we must decipher what we are obligated by our license to do. This includes remaining up-to-date on health codes, requirements, and governmental statutes that are placed in front of us. It includes the ability to break down different research, different articles, different projects that are presented to you from a multitude, that are presented from a multitude of sources available in our society, and determine the impact that can be provided. My professional experience is just a small component of my attributes that I would bring to this Board. I've had the pleasure of being on the Sexual Education Board for the last three years, and recently was reappointed, appointed to this Board. I serve as a co-chair with Kate Connors. Before this, I was Sexual Education Instructor for Ingle County Health Department for the Lansing School District. This Board has enlightened me on many components of curriculum requirements, state requirements, and community input that is required for our curriculum in Mount Pleasant Public Schools.
Melissa, what qualities, skills, and experiences do you bring to the school board?
I want to begin by saying, "Minakisiga," good day to the Board of Education here and the employees of Mount Pleasant Public Schools. I'd like to also, in a cultural way, introduce myself to you all and everybody who was present today in my most original form, which is the Nishnabe. Moabsikwetijnikasnameodam Saginaw-Chippewaheenendomjewakin Kishwasadendomcheng. My name is my Nishnabe, I am Swan Woman. I am Sturgeon Clan. I am a citizen of the Saginaw-Chippewaheenian tribe. And I professionally, my title with the Michigan Department of Education's Indigenous Education Initiative is Kishwasad, which is protector of the young. So thank you for that. My English name is Melissa Isaac. I am a 1995 graduate of Mount Pleasant Public Schools and have my children attend as well. I have a recent graduate, class of 2021. I have a middle schooler, and I will soon have two daughters who will enter the district. My skills, my resume is secondary to my family and my kids. And, you know, my biggest investment here is as a former tribal educator with the Saginaw-Chippewaheenian tribe overseeing their system, is when I talk about my kids that are entering or attend this district, I'm talking about my son and his football teammates. Those are also my children. I talk about the classmates of all of my children and their friends. And I think about all of the Indigenous learners from the Saginaw-Chippewaheenian tribal community who attend Mount Pleasant Public Schools, and those are also my kids. And so my biggest investment here, the biggest skill, is that protector of all children, of our children. Because all of the children I attend here, we all have a responsibility to them. And so I think that, you know, that is my biggest skill that I can bring. On my resume, I have a teaching degree, elementary education, from Central Michigan University, fire up. I have a Master's of Leadership, also from CMU, fire up again. And I am currently a doctoral candidate with the Educational Leadership. I'm in K-12, K-12 Leadership specifically, also at CMU. My life is here, my school is here, all of my children are here, my colleagues are here. I've also done everything that I could to leave a legacy for the students that are coming behind me. My biggest strength as an individual is my ability, my ancestral given ability, to think ahead and think about how the decisions that we make today are not going to only impact the students that are before us, but the students that are coming after them. What kind of legacy are we leaving for them to work from? Not simply making a decision, to make a decision and not worry about what's coming after us. And so I think about that. But in order to do, to do that, you have to think ahead. This decision is going to do this, this, and this. This is a ripple that this is going to have. And so aside from my resume and all of the, you know, different work that I've done in the state of Michigan for education, I would say that I'm going to leave that there. Anybody can read my resume. You can look me up on LinkedIn if you want to. That's all secondary to all of the information that I've shared with you. Igwich.
Rosie, what qualities, skills, and experience do you bring to the Board?
I bring 10 years of board experience. I've done improvising, implementing policies, directing budget budgets. Made some pretty difficult decisions, but they were all in the best interest of the committee and the community. I work with youth ages 12 to 14 years old, where we conducted surveys on the mental health of student's wellness. And we analyze those surveys. I participate in forums, work with electoral committees. I just finished my term with the Saginaw-Chippewaheen Caucus Committee for the Toronto Council of Elections. I've assisted coordinating events, so I'm pretty familiar on some of these mentoring, guiding youth, conducting, analyzing results, interviews, reaching out to sponsors. We know I'm not afraid to, you know, reach out to somebody and social butterfly in this neighborhood and bring some organizational skills if needed. I think my skills and experiences would be a great voice to represent the Board or district in our conversations.
Thank you. Tyler, what qualities, skills, and experience do you bring to the Board?
Thank you, Dana. Thank you to the Board members for inviting us here to interview today. And thank you to the members of the public for listening. So my name is Tyler Morkan, and I have been a community member of Mount Pleasant for about 16 years. I came to Mount Pleasant, actually, from tiny little town in the Afro Peninsula, not thinking I'd stay around too long after I graduated from CMU, but here I am, 16 years later. And this is where my wife and I have chosen to raise our family. I have two sons. Our oldest just started kindergarten. Actually, he felt very excited, comes home and shares a lot of great things that are happening in his school. In terms of the context of the school board, my background in terms of positions, I've done a number of different things related, all related to education. I've got a basically 15-year career already focused entirely in the education area. So, for example, I was a teacher right here in Mount Pleasant. I taught at West Intermediate. I taught a course called Word Language and Cultures. It was a great class for seventh graders at West, now Mount Pleasant Middle School, I know, to kind of learn and explore about word languages and cultures. I also taught prior to that. I taught also French in East Lansing. Also loved that position as well, loved teaching kids about the joys of the French language and culture, which I consider myself a proponent of. Also, Mount Pleasant, I substitute taught in Mount Pleasant. I was a tutor when I was in, when I was doing undergrad. I tutored a student in, it was just a second language. And so I've got a lot of experience just right here in Mount Pleasant alone and looking at different sides of issues as a teacher and kind of observing kind of the daily happenings in our district. Outside of Mount Pleasant, I also have a lot of different experience teaching both K-12 and higher ed. Like I mentioned, I taught prior to working in Mount Pleasant. I taught East Lansing for two years. But I also taught at Central Michigan University, CMU. I don't know why I said Central Michigan University. I don't know what CMU is, but taught at CMU for a few years in the English Department and in the English Language Institute. So a lot of different experience in teaching and education. Current work at the University of Michigan in the international education. So also have experience in student affairs and higher ed as well. So in terms of skills, I think the way that I would approach being a board member is not all in like how I approached being a classroom teacher. And that is that relationships are key. So everything that happens at a board level is about relationships in some fashion, whether that be relationships with teachers, with administrators, with the community, with students. Forging those positive relationships really kind of sets everything else in motion to be able to do everything else that needs to be done at the board level. And that's where I think I can excel. So thank you again.
All right, Shida. What qualities, skills, and experience do you bring to the Board?
Bonjour. I would like to say hello to the board members and to the public and to candidates as well. And Igwich, thank you for allowing me this opportunity to be interviewed in front of you. I think this is a very important position for our children and for the community. And it's not something that is taken lightly. I'll tell you a little bit of my background. I worked out at the NIMKI Memorial Wellness Center for probably 35 years. And I have done a few different positions in there because my ultimate goal was to work my way to the Health Director. And I kind of found myself in this last position that I've been in, which is the Purchase Support Care Tech. And I loved it so much that I couldn't move on. So I've been comfortably in there for quite some time. Along with that, during that time, tribal members are allowed to run for office with the tribal council. And so I have served two separate terms on the tribal council. The first one, I was nominated within my peers on council as the Executive Secretary. And then the second term that I had served, I was nominated and voted as the Executive Treasurer. So I took those to be also high honors as well. Along with having that position as the treasurer, I was also part of overseeing the 2% distribution. So I'm sure you guys are aware of what that is. And it's very helpful, and I love that we can give back in our education for all of our community. I think that's vitally important. And I think, you know, I think keeping that open and having someone such as myself sitting on the Board and having that knowledge and a rapport with tribal council, that that would be a good asset as well. Along with that, we also voted on many issues, many sensitive issues. So along with that, I'm aware of how the Board's run. You know, I had that background skills. Along with that, I've also, we worked with Robert's Rules. So I am familiar with that, but it's been a minute, so I really need to be refreshed on that, if that's what the Board works, and I believe you do. And so I'm also aware, because of where I work at NIMKI, and of course, when I was on council, is that confidentiality is utmost. And so that has to not be taken lightly. And so when we had issues, if they, you know, presented to the Board, I understand what that entails as well. I've lived in Mount Pleasant District my entire life. Maybe six months I lived in Texas when I was younger. But I've always come back, you know, this was my home. And I've raised with my husband six children who have also come through the Mount Pleasant Public Schools. So, you know, I'm very well-versed on that. So I just want to say thank you for this opportunity.
Thank you all for having me.
Melissa, what are the biggest strengths of our districts? And what are the challenges facing Mount Pleasant Public Schools?
This is probably the hardest question to answer, to be honest. Because I go back and forth. A lot of the work that I do, one of my pillars, my own personal professional pillars is to center on the sacred, which would be our students. Those are the most sacred beings on this earth. And so they, we have to do our best to take care of them. They are deserving of that. They are privileged to have that care. But then I think about the other side of that and how we are tasked with that responsibility as the educators in their lives, as the adults in their lives. Sometimes they haven't yet developed the voice to speak for themselves. And we have to do our best to listen to them and sometimes speak for them or empower them to speak for themselves. And so then I go back to the educators and the adults in the district who are given that great responsibility of dedicating their lives, their professional lives, and not always just within the professional, you know, day or calendar, but outside of that as well. And so as a teacher, an elementary teacher, I have that experience. I have gone through more heartbreak, more celebration with them than I have anybody else in all of those generations of kids that I taught. And so then I think again, teachers, our educators, are the biggest strength of the district because they have their hands full. That's a big responsibility. So I guess tonight I'll settle on educators. Tomorrow, it might be the sacred again, because it does go back and forth that way. What is the challenge, biggest challenge facing Mount Pleasant Public Schools? Like any other school in this nation who are continuing to survive a global pandemic, would be the repercussions of that and what we've all collectively been through. And the change to education is we're trying to figure that out. And so I would say that's not going to be solved. We're still in the pandemic, so to speak, coming toward the end of it. We are going to continue to see the repercussions, the impact of that for three to five years at least. That's realistic. It's not going to be resolved this school year. Tomorrow, we'd like to, we'd like it to be, but speaking very realistically, this is long-term. It's that thinking forward that I mentioned earlier, that is going to be the biggest challenge that faces Mount Pleasant Public Schools, not just our students, but our teachers as well, our mental health. So Igwich for the question.
Rosie, what are the biggest strengths of our district and what are the challenges facing Mount Pleasant Public Schools?
Rosie, I'm sorry. Can you push the microphone a little closer, please? I want to make sure our camera gets out. Thank you. Can you hear me? Okay.
One of the biggest strengths, I think, our district has are the resources that we have to implement and improve programs for our students. Challenges, I think, are bullying, I guess, diversity awareness, underperformed academic scores, understaffing, because I know there was an issue with busing and stuff like that. And youth experiencing drugs and alcohol on the obstacle grounds. To me, that's an issue. Like I mentioned before, we did a survey with some of the students. And we found that there were kids as young as eight years old experiencing things. So I just think, you know, that's an issue for me, I guess, for parents to know. And I guess that's pretty much it.
Thank you, Lucy. Tyler, what are the biggest strengths of our district? What are the challenges facing Mount Pleasant Public Schools?
Yeah, well, Melissa articulated very beautifully how educators play into the role of educating students and how they play this really, really fundamental role. And I would echo that and say that, I believe, that our educators, our teachers, our staff, our administrators, everybody at the staff level really goes above and beyond and does a phenomenal job and is just a huge strength and asset for our district. Without them, we couldn't, we couldn't do what we do. So shout out to our teachers and staff for being our biggest strength, in my opinion. Challenges, so a lot of challenges sort of rebounding from the COVID-19 pandemic. Certainly something that we will have to manage. I think one of the symptoms of that is our teacher shortage that we're dealing with. And so we've had to hire a number of teachers in the district through the emergency, emergency certification, which we have to do what we have to do, and that's, that's why we've gotten great educators because of that. But we do need to sort of kind of find some ways to do what we can do at the local level. I know it's, it's difficult because it is a nationwide trend. And so whatever we can do at the local level to kind of, kind of help with that. And that might be, I know that was talked about signing bonuses for teachers. That was talked about, actually, we might be brought that up. That is definitely something to consider. I know that districts across the state, across the country, are getting something very similar. Some kind of retention bonus or some kind of incentive to continue to retain the good teachers that we have and continue to attract new teachers to come and teach for Mount Pleasant. So I'd say that's a challenge, but we can certainly kind of manage it the best we can. So, I'd say that's a challenge, but we can certainly kind of manage it the best we can at the local level. I think another challenge that is kind of tied up in that a little bit is some of the impact that we're seeing in our district from changes that we're seeing at CMU, right? So, CMU has experienced a decline in enrollment over the last ten years or so. That, I think, has had a ripple impact down to the district level. And so, obviously, we can't control what happens at CMU, but that does kind of play a big impact and a big role in our community. And so, addressing what we can to sort of manage that and if that means looking at kind of how enrollment might change and whatnot going forward, we kind of have to look at that and evaluate how that's going to have an impact on us as well. So, that's what I would probably summarize as the pressing challenge at the moment.
Shelley. What are the biggest strengths of our district? What are the challenges facing Mount Pleasant Public Schools?
Thank you. I have to agree with the other couple candidates that talked about the teachers, because they really are a big focal point of our students. And, you know, I know we've had some struggles with going through the COVID. And that in itself is, you know, because we don't know what the ripple effect will be for that for years to come. So, you know, I say thank you to the teachers and the staff, because they all come together, you know, to try to keep this running as smoothly as possible. I have a couple of them, so, you know, outside the teachers and the staff. I like the school-funded curricular activities, extracurricular activities, because I also think that that's vitally important for our students. Because, yes, we need to educate them with their basics, but I think they're challenged with those extracurricular activities to be a better person. And this is something that they're going to be able to carry down the road with them, you know, once they graduate, because, you know, you're going to have downfalls and you're going to have, you know, moments that you're struggling in the curricular. But, you're going to force yourself or, I don't want to say force yourself, you want to challenge yourself to be better. So, I think that also is something that will help them. So, thank you for that. The other one that I have is the parent committee that was formed. I think that was vitally important. And I want to thank Sheila and Jessica for spearheading that. Because that opened up dialogue for the parents, you know, to be able to come here and state their concerns and their questions and, you know, kind of keep that communication open with not just the parents, but the community as well as a whole. So, I, I think that that's a big asset as well. The biggest challenge that I see, but I see positivity coming from this, was the parent division, the participation, as I've seen in comments and parents that have spoke with me. And I'm glad to see that dialogue, that they're, you know, wanting to bring that forward and discuss it. But along with that, that, you know, getting that, I'm sorry, the speaking. Sorry, my handwriting is terrible, I apologize. I just think that, you know, that we're on the right track with that parent committee for that open dialogue and for more communication. So that, I think, communication really is the key to helping, you know, not only the board, the parents, but with the students as well. So, I think that those are, that was a good asset, but it's moving forward on that on a positive note.
Christina. What are the biggest strengths of our district and what are the challenges facing Mount Pleasant Public Schools?
Hi, Chris. I think the biggest strength is the collaboration that our school district has with the tribe. I graduated from Alma High School. And even though we're only twenty minutes away from here, there was not that cultural awareness. Rural schools in general can often lack that cultural awareness. And then, when they get to rural worlds, that's where a lot of our negativity can come into play, is when that's not brought forth. So, I see that the active integration that you guys consistently take as a school board, as a district in general, with the tribe is one of the biggest strengths of our district personally, because that's where we can all create better individuals, is when we're more well-developed and well-rounded. I'm going to go against the grain though of the challenges facing it. I personally do not see the educators as the biggest strength of our school system and it may be my biggest downfall, but I personally believe that we can't pinpoint one group of people when we're talking about a strength. The strength in general has to be transparent. We have to look at the integrative component that parents, community members, active groups, things like that can have a say. I specifically, to use one word, think that the challenge that our school board and district specifically faces is transparency. We specifically saw this in our sex education board when we did a survey of parents, that an underwhelming majority of our community doesn't even know how to access curriculum material on the internet. And so, part of that, I believe, comes back to people that are involved actively and how we can become more transparent as a district to the teachers, from the teachers to the parents and involve that active. And I will come forth and say that parents are activists are often looked at as a downfall to and a burden to districts. But I would say we should rejoice that we had twelve candidates plus multiple active early candidates in the active school board, because we all have one thing in mind and that's what's best for the children of this community.
Rosie. What will you do to become ineffective or become effective as Mount Pleasant Public School Board Member?
To become an effective board member, I would take my role for the district seriously. If I uphold the fire laws in every aspect. Maybe I would refuse myself in any personal matters we have to cover, so what I may know. It's just a professional interview. But I would still, if requested by the board, provide my opinion for the forum if need be. And I would make the appropriate advice decisions towards students and teachers.
Thank you. Tyler. What will you do to become effective as a Mount Pleasant Public School Board Member?
So, I probably kind of boil this down to two kind of points. And that is to listen and to read. And so, the listening aspect is kind of taking in all sides of whatever issue it is that we're discussing at the moment, whether that's a controversial issue or even just a benign kind of formal issue. But listening to kind of all different sides of it. So, listening to our community members that speak during public comment or listening to our teachers as they might voice opinions or send emails or maybe there's a survey that gets done. There was a survey we mentioned about the curriculum resources, kind of looking at that data too and analyzing, okay, where maybe are there some shortcomings or some weaknesses? Where might we as a district or where might I need to kind of focus my energy on? So, so I think that aspect is, as well as also reading. So, I am, I sort of criticized my wife a little bit, because I tend to like to read more nonfiction works. And, but that's for my own sort of professional development. So, for example, I read very recently Indigenous People's History of the United States. And I found that book very enlightening. And that's just kind of one example of reading that is helpful, not only for me to understand a lot of what's happening in our world, but also to be an effective board member here as well. So, listening, reading, those are kind of my two main points at least to get started.
Thank you. Shelley. What would you do to become an effective as a Mount Pleasant Public School Board Member?
Yes. Along with Tyler, I would definitely listen, because I think that is a critical point to, not only to parents and to the community, but to other board members. Because you guys have knowledge and you have experience, you've sat on here as long as you have. And so, I definitely would come to you for advice or, you know, some guidance. I do know how to make decisions and I can make decisions and I can do it, you know, with the utmost best intention. But I definitely believe also that we should be able to reach out to our staff and, you know, via the emails and keep that communication going. That I, when I sat on tribal council, and we had a lot of members, like a lot, and I would tell them that my door was open, you know, I would have to learn what the guidelines are as far as, you know, be able to give that out to, you know, the community and such. But if it's, if it's possible and available, then I would definitely do that. Because I believe in, you know, trying to do the best that I can decision-wise based upon the facts. So, you know, I could make a good sound decision. And also, the final would be to be active in the community, you know, if we have events. And as such, I'm available and I'm ready and willing and able.
Thank you. Christina. What will you do to become effective as a Mount Pleasant Public School Board Member?
First, it would greatly be to satisfy my fourteen-year-old, because he's quite embarrassed that I'm sitting here today. That's a thing. I would definitely focus on one of the main priorities of the Michigan School Board of Education and that's not to run our schools as a school board, but instead determine what our children need the most and then make those impacts positively on the community. For doing that, remaining unbiased, dedicate my time to advertisements. I'm well-aware of the time rate advertisements vary into research or responsibility. It would take, while I do value input of those that have been on the board for a period of time, I think it's also extremely important to research and know truly the entire big picture, because there's so much biased information in the world. And also, any professional requirements that I have brought forth previously would definitely impact my ability to remain as a positive board member for public schools.
Thank you. Melissa. What will you do to become an effective as a Mount Pleasant Public School Board Member?
So, I've developed a series of, like I mentioned earlier, professional pillars for myself and things that I'm consistently trying to work on to be a stronger leader, a stronger person, and to live and see the world through an Indigenous knowledge system. Very well-versed in Western knowledge systems. But to also incorporate an Indigenous knowledge system in life just really spreads the continuum of knowledge in the way that you can see and look at the world. To be a better school board member, I would honor relationships. That's the foundation from which we all live and learn. I would acknowledge and respect the relationships of others, because you all already have relationships established with quite a network of people and parents and staff members. I would work to continue nurturing relationships and keep myself open to engaging in new relationships. People quite often want to know what you're about and whoa, whoa, and ask other people. And I'm pretty, just come talk to me. You know, engage in a relationship with me, let's have a conversation. That's how I would be a better school board member. I would also practice servant leadership, specifically in Indigenous servant leadership. To be of service to our communities, it's a privilege, it's an honor. And the construct of leadership doesn't simply reside in people who are educated or people who are even elected to these positions. But it's innate to Indigenous people in particular, but innate to others as well. Not everybody's given the opportunity to let that happen though. So, I would practice Indigenous servant leadership. And then, another thing that I would do, again, going back to the Indigenous knowledge systems, is I would really work to Indigenousize the narrative here. I would interrupt forces that perpetuate inequity, invisibility, interracial of not just Indigenous students, but otherized marginalized groups of people. To be able to do that would be to require a shift in how data, and I've watched the meetings where data is presented, I'm like, whoa, 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 why didn't you gloss over that? Let's talk about that. Nobody is expected to have the answer, but you can't ever come to an answer if you don't have the discussion first. And to just really have the discussion about how those things are collected, analyzed, you know, the whole data mindset. And that I understand the power of data to affirm and support those authorized groups of people so that we can create a more equitable, accurate educational landscape for all of those populations.
Thank you.
Tyler. Identify a recent board decision that you felt strongly about and describe how you would balance community concerns, student needs, state and federal law, staff considerations, and your personal values and beliefs to determine how to vote on this issue.
Thank you, good question. So, this is not necessarily the most recent decision that was passed by the board, but going back, you know, just a year and a half, a couple of years now, was the decision related to masking, universal masking in our schools. So, this would have been fall of 2020, when there was a lot of uncertainty about going back to face-to-face schooling and structure and a lot of concern about COVID-19 and what that would mean for our schools. And there was a lot of controversy at the time over whether or not we should choose to have universal masking in our schools. And the board ultimately voted in favor of universal masking. And that was a decision that I wholeheartedly supported, I felt very strongly about. And I was thankful and glad that the board did make that decision, when a lot of other school boards across the state, across the country, were making the contrary decision to not mask, to, you know, to make it mask optional. And I know that it's, you know, again, there was a lot of controversy about it, but in my view, the way that I looked at it and the way that I would have made a similar decision as a board member is, again, I mentioned listening, right? So, if we listen to what different people were saying about that, you know, you have members of the community being very vocal and strongly advocating for choice in that matter. But, on the other hand, and I feel much more strongly weighted, you have the opinions and the professional opinions, the scientific opinions of members of different organizations such as the CDC, the American Association of Pediatrics, our local health department. All of those individuals are in that position based on, you know, where they work or their background, their education, to make that sort of opinion or that sort of statement. Where I don't have a health background, right? I'm not a doctor, I'm not, I'm not a scientist. And so, to listen to our doctors, our scientists, our health professionals, that, I think, for that particular decision was the best thing to do and ultimately then arrived us at the decision for universal masking. Because if you listened within the medical and the scientific community, there really was no controversy about that. That wasn't a controversial issue in that particular community. It was just, there were other people that had differing opinions about maybe the political motivations about those organizations. And we could talk about that, because there may be something there to explore. But the fact is, the people that we have in those positions and those organizations, the people that we need to rely on are all saying, this is what we should be doing for our kids in the best interest of our kids to keep them safe. So, in my view, if my personal opinion on masking doesn't really matter in that case, whether or not I support masking or not as an individual and think that whether or not the government should mandate it, I don't think that that plays into it. Again, if our professionals and those that are in that position to say, you know, this is in the best interest of our kids, this will keep our kids safe, that's absolutely what we should do and the board did the right decision on that. So, that's kind of the recent issue to help discuss.
Thank you, Tyler. Shelley. Identify a recent board decision that you felt strongly about and describe how you would balance community concerns, student needs, state and federal law, staff consideration, and your personal values and beliefs to determine how to vote on this issue.
Thank you. First, I would like to, I have a couple that I think very strongly about. And one of them I had mentioned previously was the parent committee, because I think that that's very important, the open communication, the dialogue between the parents and, you know, the board. So, I felt really strongly about that. And the other one was the extracurricular activities, because I believe that is important for our students, you know, to have that to look forward to. Regarding balancing the community concerns, I think that we should be able to, along with that parenting committee is listen to what the parents have to say. Because I think one of the things is that, you know, they need to feel that their voice is being heard. And I think that's important. And vice versa, when we're giving the information out to the community, it's important for them to hear, you know, the side of the board as well on issues, to take notes and to follow up regarding that. The students' needs, I think that we should be able to reach out to the staff regarding concerns. And I know that the staff reaches out to you when they have concerns as well. And then they have meetings and follow-up and that's very important, to try to come to a resolution that's best in the best interest of our students and the staff. And regarding the state and federal law... And regarding the state and federal laws, I think in that regard, that's something that we need training as new board of, you know, educators on the board, that we need to have that training so that we make sure that we stay within our realm of those policies and the laws and the bylaws so we can make better decisions on that. That's quite important. And then regarding the staff considerations, I think that we should, you know, be able to meet with the staff. I know staff comes forward, you know, with the things that they're bringing to present to you, but if it's a relation to like issues with students, you know, that they're able to come to us or, you know, vice versa, us go to them, you know, and do some follow up with that to see, you know, how is it working? Is it working, you know, out well for the staff and the student? Because ultimately, we want to make sure that we're doing the best that we can for the students. That's why we would be here. And then in regards to the personal values and beliefs, that would not determine what my vote is. My vote would be based upon the laws and the policies. And then with that training, that would make me better capable of making my vote based upon that, staying within that. But I also believe in the healthy discussion amongst the board members and all that are involved.
Thank you, Shelley. Christina, identify a recent board decision that you felt strongly about and describe how you would balance community concerns, student needs, state and federal law, staff considerations, and your personal values and beliefs to determine how to vote on this issue.
So I think it's important to mention that this question doesn't say whether we would be for or against the board's decision, but instead how we view that our personal input would be taken. And with that, I will mention that highly controversial, most recent decision to turn down the resolution concerning sexuality and gender education promotion in Michigan Public Schools. And with that, it's not necessarily the vote for or the vote against, but every single one of you at some point in your conversations discussing this in the school board meetings mentioned how important transparency, collaboration, and accountability are. And I would go back to many things that I've said throughout the evening tonight, but I fully firmly believe that those are areas of improvement that we have to take on board as a district. And unfortunately, watching some of these school board meetings, I recognize that instead of simply voting for or against and turn something down, using that as an advantage and taking something like that as a stepping stone. How can we make this so that the resolution is not as vague? How can we tackle some appearance concerns about the transparency and accountability? For example, what material is considered high risk and offensive to warrant that content warning? How can we be more open to parents? Because that's what, if you're in the community, that's what you're hearing is that people do not believe that as a district, teachers, administrators, school board is being fully transparent and accountable to what the general, what's best for the general population. And so with that, keeping in mind the state and federal laws, we know what they are. We've definitely brought those forward and have multiple professionals from a sex education board present to define these different areas. I would take my personal beliefs completely out of it because there is zero benefit to a child presenting biased information. And I would look strictly at the state and federal laws and how we could use that specific resolution as a stepping stone to improve our future for our kids.
Thank you, Christina. Alyssa, identify a recent board decision that you felt strongly about and describe how you would balance community concerns, student needs, state and federal law, staff considerations, and your personal values and beliefs to determine how to vote on this issue.
Yes, me much for that question. When I was thinking about this question, I was thinking about my former role as a tribal education director for the Saginaw Chautauqua Indian Tribe and what we were going to do for the pandemic response. There are a lot of things that fit under that umbrella, but the umbrella itself is pandemic response. And I sat in a lot of meetings with other superintendents, listening to doctors and scientists and, you know, everybody informing us on what's trending, what's happening, and having to be able to have the ability to look at that data and understand what they were telling you, but also being able to listen and know your district because what happens at Mount Pleasant Public Schools and that response is going to be different than, say, what happens in the Upper Peninsula or down in metro Detroit. And taking that information and making it applicable and knowing your community, your district, your students, your staff, knowing them well enough to know how to take that information and make it meaningful, make it useful. And so I felt very strongly that Mount Pleasant Public Schools made the right decision in their pandemic response at every level. It was controversial, but that's, that's, it was decisive. It was decisive and it took all students into consideration, not just the majority of students into consideration. How would I balance state, federal policy? Again, reflecting back on my time as a tribal education director, that was my job because I had to look at federal policy to know what kind of informed decision to make for the tribal community. I looked at state policy because although we didn't follow that or we didn't have to follow it, we had to decide if we were going to opt in or not, and that recommendation came from me. And so I have what I call kind of my love policy. Hate to say that out loud, but I, a few of my friends were like, yeah, let's put the policy posse together and read through this because we wanted to know, we wanted to be informed. And we wanted to not take the word, I didn't want to be influenced, I wanted to be informed. And so that's why I took the time to read the policy for what it was and not listen to somebody else's interpretation of it. Along with those required meetings as a school leader, I was appointed to a couple of state committees by the Whitmer administration, which would be the Return to School Advisory Committee. There were so many brilliant people there and I learned so much from them and was able to offer insight into what I was seeing in front of me with my students. And then the, again, to the Student Recovery Advisory Council to address what was going to happen now that we had been through that time away from school. How are we going to manage this? And the thing that I thought most strongly about was the mental health aspect of everybody involved. How are we going to get through that because some people were more impacted than others? In the tribal community, we all know somebody who passed away because it hit us the hardest. And how are we going to be able to help our families and our students through that grief while also trying to catch up with a very overwhelmingly different school setting and the fear that goes along with that, the uncertainty? And so I do, again, feel very strongly that Mount Pleasant Public Schools made the right decision when it came to their pandemic response.
Thank you. Rosie, identify a recent board decision that you felt strongly about and describe how you would balance community concerns, student needs, state and federal law, staff considerations, and your personal beliefs and values to determine how to vote on this issue.
Well, a recent decision, board has made or had partaken in, was from, I was reading the minutes from September 19th, was Orange Shirt Day in support of Every Child Act, which was September 30th. Discussing that day here with the board and seeing that no board members were against or abstained from that discussion. So I want to thank you guys because it meant a lot to, for allowing our students to participate in that day. It was amazing to see that the staff also participated. They wore their orange shirts. I know there was an event at the tribal gym and I actually saw a few Mount Pleasant teachers there. My niece actually saw one of her teachers from last year and it meant the world to her to see that her teacher was in support of that day as a student and as a Native American child. So it showed our community that every student matters too. So allowing the high school students, because I know some of the students have delivered t-shirts to their peers at local schools, I know, I know they have delivered some to Mount Pleasant High School and even middle school. I thought that was a really good collaboration for honoring and remembering the lives that the loss of board and school care in our local community. So to balance myself, I kind of just put it in like a short summary with the, all of the questions. I just, to balance myself in determining how to vote on the issues, I would again, take my role as a board member serious, upholding the bylaws to the full extent, suggest looking at academic performance scores and making the most appropriate decisions based on supportive information and data that's provided. I work with numbers, so I like to look at them and try to intervene in issue. There is one. So I would be open-minded, open-minded and thorough.
Thank you, everyone.
I believe Shelley, you're up next.
Yeah.
What would you like to see changed in Mount Pleasant Public Schools? And how do you envision your role in that change?
Thank you. What I would like to see changed is not actually changed, but more enhanced as to what we have. We have a good dialogue between the tribe and the Mount Pleasant Public School Board. But I always believe that we can always have more open communication than what we have. We always have room for growth. And I think that if I were selected, I would bridge that gap from the tribe. I have a good rapport with them, as I've said earlier, and being on the board. And I think that just would open that up for a better communication.
Thank you, Shelley. Christina, what would you like to see changed in Mount Pleasant Public Schools? And how do you envision your role in that change?
I don't think it's a single area or topic that we can focus on. I'm going to go right back to the beginning. As I previously stated, my goal is not to dictate or decide how the district is ran, but instead recognize our educational needs and it's very evident now more than ever. I personally believe that our students need different integrative components to their education and how we can move forward transparently with collaboration, not authoritative leadership.
Thank you, Christina. Melissa, what would you like to see changed in Mount Pleasant Public Schools? How do you envision your change, your role in that change?
I'm going to go back to those professional pillars that I have developed for myself. And when we, when we look at the symptoms of a system and we focus on the symptoms and we want to change those symptoms, we never really transform the system. It stays the same. And so what I would like to do is really get to the root of what those harmful systems may be. As a parent, I can tell you for, you know, my family and I, what some of those symptoms are, but it's going to be different for anybody else because their experiences are so different. So when I think, when I talk about transforming systems, I know that there's no place for symptoms that don't work or perpetuate harm because sometimes they do. But I'm mindful that variations of a harmful system are not acceptable. It's again, it's addressing the symptom but not getting to the, or addressing the symptom but not getting to the system. And I'm aware that transformed systems must be sustainable. So people that want to come in and burn it all down, that's not helpful. Because if you want to sustain the lasting change, it has to be incremental. And so I see my role by doing that, transforming the system, my job is to disrupt the status quo. And that makes people uncomfortable. We can say it that way, but disruptions aren't always bad, right? They're not always negative. And so I feel like I would have a moral obligation to resist the historic and ongoing marginalization and educational inequities of relegated peoples and prioritize the necessity to rely on my Indigenous knowledge systems and the Western knowledge system as the expert perspective in the work, it can't be just narrow. It has to be broadened. And I feel like that's how I would address that.
Thank you, Melissa. Rosie, what do you, what would you like to see changed in Mount Pleasant Public Schools? And how do you envision your role in that change?
One thing I would like to see changed is more being done with the okay to say. And you're all pretty much aware of what the okay to say is. So I guess my role would be to review policies, I guess, with the certain kind of officers and board of course, and to, I guess, suggest mandating staff members to document and interview when incidents are first reported. And to hold staff members and students and parents accountable if things escalate and they become violence. I know a couple of times I've actually picked up my daughter at the middle school and I buy the pine trees by the church right next to it. I witnessed a couple of students literally fighting out there. So for me, that's, that's a concern, violence. I have zero tolerance for it in my home. Accountability, I'm really big on that. So I guess as a board member, I would research fully intervention programs for students that require parental involvement. Because from my experience working with youth, majority of the students that bully other children are actually fully at home. So at the end of the day, some of our students go home with emotional, visible, mental, and spiritual trauma. And what can we do about that? So I think as a board member, it would be important for me to help provide a safe environment for other students, or for students to learn.
Thank you, Rosie. Tyler, what would you like to see changed in Mount Pleasant Public Schools? And how do you envision your role in that change?
Thank you. And I don't, I don't mean to critique the question, it's a good question, but I do think in my view and my role in coming in, fill in the partial term, that the question at this stage, for me, is maybe just slightly quicker and shorter in that I don't, I need time to evaluate it. I need time to really sink in and look at and take stock of everything that's happening in our district. The things that I, are sort of on my radar are things that I've only heard about sort of tangentially, right? And that, and that's something that I've really, you know, kind of looked at and evaluated from, from your perspective as a board member. So that said though, there are just a few things that are on my radar that I would kind of like to look at. One of those is kind of our public perception, public reputation, if you will. Particularly at the middle school, there seems to be this pervasive community thread that, that, you know, middle school is difficult and, you know, it's not a great environment. And I taught at the middle school myself and I disagree, right? I think the middle school is a fantastic environment for our children. It's a middle school. Middle school's a challenging time for, for our kids. And that does present certain challenges in, in running that particular building. But, you know, this pervasive theory that the middle school is just this horrible, awful environment, we've got to work to change that somewhat. It's not just the middle school, it's other pockets as well in our district. So I think reputation, public perception is really big. And part of that might be the transparency pieces that talked about a little bit as well. Sometimes when, when there are controversial issues that arise, sometimes those do tend to get discussed kind of in a vacuum, kind of almost, it almost feels secretive and that doesn't really get addressed publicly in, in the way that it should. So maybe we've got to reevaluate that. Also, I think, you know, one of the things for me, having been a K-12 educator, is our over-reliance on standardized testing and looking at the value that we're extracting from. I know that some of the standardized testing we have to do, we have a choice in. But for example, looking at, we, we use NWBA, for example, in, in our grades to determine student growth. And really looking at that test and seeing, you know, that test is quite, quite difficult for our younger students. And so really looking at, you know, are we, are we getting the value out of that test that we need to get? Because, you know, maybe the, the pain, for lack of a better word, that we're conflicting on students by having to go to that test, maybe that's worth it if we're getting some really inherent value out of the results from that test. But I don't know that we've necessarily done that particular analysis or looked that deep into that. And so, you know, are we just subjecting them year after year to this, this test? That's quite difficult for them to sit for that period of time on a computer, answer those questions as the test progressively gets harder. And ultimately, at the end, really is sort of set up for them to fail it, right? Because the questions do get harder and harder, which they'll start answering, you know, wrong and continue to answer wrong until the test finally stops and says, here's your score. So frustrating experience, I really would like to look into that. Again, I would need time to sort of analyze, look at it. This is just from my perspective as a community member, as a parent. There may be things about that test I'm not aware of and that's about that test I'm not aware of and that's why, you know, I would need to, to time to really settle in and look at that as a board member.
Thank you. My turn. Now I appreciate the question I got. Okay, so I could start with Christina. What do you think are the most important skills for students to have when they graduate?
I personally, I'm glad you think it's your favorite one because I found it like the most diverse question out of all of them. Coming from my mother's family's farmer, is my father-in-law taught here for many years in woodshop. My husband has his woodshop degree as well, so I definitely recognize that the traits are valuable life skill and I think that Mount Pleasant has one of the best areas, one of the best technical schools in the area to advance that. But I would say that life skills very similar to, of course, my job in healthcare is a spectrum of a disease process, right? We can't define what a child will do or what life skills they will take with them. We can only impact them and further help guide them to what best assets of their life. And as a collaborative end goal, end goal, it's crucial to recognize that life skills will not be the same for every individual child. It's okay that some children will not go to college. It's okay that some kids may not have other parents or other family members with degrees and we need to recognize that. How can we help build them up if that's something they do want to take on board and they just don't know the steps and processes? The basic education necessities that are shown with recent testing in our district is an area that cannot be left unturned for our students. While I do agree that standardized testing is not a black and white area in any component of life, basic education is a important component. Any type of life skills to be successful, even if you're a stay-at-home mother or a stay-at-home father, you have to have those basic life skills that come through our basic education needs.
Thank you. Next would be Melissa. What do you think are the most important skills for students to have when they graduate?
So interestingly enough, I also, the first thing I thought about was C T E, Career Tech Ed. I used to serve on a work group that were STEM-related educators, C T E, people who worked specifically with the Perkins, I think that's a very good law. Not one of my favorite laws to read, but also with business partners in the area and they were having this very brief discussion, or not brief, but a very in-depth discussion about employability. What makes a student employable? It isn't the skill necessarily that they learn here. It isn't necessarily the academics. They identified that it was their ability to work with others and learn because they could teach them, business people could teach them the skills that they needed to be employed with them, but if they can't work well with others and they don't understand how they're impacting others, then it was no good. They also mentioned work ethic and, and teaching a really rich work ethic. And that's what I really appreciate about Career Tech Ed is that it's not the one-size-fits-all education that a lot of schools kind of get stuck in that rut in, like trying to fit a square peg into a round hole. It's not for every student, but that was what I came up with as far as, you know, employability and being able to enter the workforce when you leave a public school.
Thank you very much. Rosie, what do you think are the most important skills for students to have when they graduate?
I would have to say financial awareness, staying active, having self-discipline, time management, living healthy lifestyles, having great social skills, positive self-esteem and having confidence in themselves and taking what they learned from their academics with them because they're obviously going to go to college, so it's important to remember what they learned here and to have confidence in their decisions and whichever career fields they may choose.
Thank you very much. Tyler, what do you think are the most important skills for students to have when they graduate?
Thank you for the question. So my favorite teacher when I was in school was my middle school band teacher. His name was Mr. Stender, still is Mr. Stender, he's still alive and I still see him occasionally. And he used to talk about a lot in, in band, so, you know, thinking about learning an instrument. I still play a little bit of music myself, but definitely music is not my strong suit, but I still remember a lot of the lessons that he taught in that class. And one of the things he would say a lot was that my goal as a teacher is not to prepare you for here at school, it's to prepare you for out there. And that to me is the ultimate goal of public education and education in general. And so I sort of distilled that down into three things. That would be problem solving, critical thinking and grit. And some of those are all sort of interconnected. So I think of problem solving and grit and kind of lump those together. They're, they're slightly different, but they, but they're related. And I think about, you know, some of the students I had when I taught middle school who would encounter a challenge and then just immediately give up, right? They were confronted with this challenge, they didn't know how to solve it, they just said, I'm done. And so I think it's important and one of the things I hope to teach my children is that, you know, you're going to encounter difficult situations, challenging times. You can't, you can't just give up. You've got to, you've got to put the effort in, that's the grit component, right? You've got to stick to it, you've got to keep with it, you've got to do what you can to solve an issue and that's the problem solving component. And, and then another piece of that is, as I mentioned, critical thinking. So, you know, going out into the real world after, after graduating, you know, we're confronted with so much information and misinformation and being able to really think critically about that and determine, you know, okay, I've heard this claim now, is what I'm hearing, is that, is that true? Is that false? Let me think about that critically for a second and then arrive at an ultimate conclusion to guide whatever path it is that, that there, whether that be a career opportunity, whether that be personal relationships, whatever it is, to me, critical thinking, to be able to think critically about an issue is, is really an important skill. So again, problem solving, critical thinking, grit.
Thank you very much. Shelley, what do you think are the most important skills for students to have when they graduate?
I, I agree with the problem solving because we're all going to have them and I kind of think that as you're even going through school from kindergarten, like learning to share, I mean, you know, sometimes the world can be rough when you're that young and so, you know, I agree with the problem solving. But I also believe too that they should have, to be able to pursue being able to get a job and it might not necessarily be a trade skill, but I also think that that is also a good idea as a trade skill. As we can see in this world that it's more and more having a trade makes it easier to get employment. And if it's something that, you know, you can't get straight out of school, another option would be higher education. The world is at their doorstep and they can do whatever they want. And I think part of that feeling of being able to do whatever they want is, comes from while they're in school. Everyone knows that we've all had a favorite teacher and that favorite teacher has left an imprint on us. What is that imprint going to be? Is it something that we're going to move forward? And remember 20, 30 years when we're out of school and then we continue to, I can look back and say, you know, I have this guidance here. We have guidance counselors, so I know that they help as well. So those are the things that I think they should have when they leave school.
Thank you.
Okay, so this brings us to the last, for the last part for everyone, starting with Melissa. An average month for a school board member includes about two to five scheduled meetings and perhaps another three school or community-related activities. In addition, there is daily email correspondence, required readings and district updates. How will you fit this into your schedule?
As a student, a mother and a professional, like everything else, I'll grow another arm and you make time for what you prioritize. And this is definitely a priority for me or I wouldn't have put my name in the hat to do this and anything that can't receive my full attention, I know better than to take it on. So that's how I would make it fit.
Rosie, an average month for a school board member includes about two to five scheduled meetings and perhaps another three school or community-related activities. In addition, there is daily email correspondence, required reading and district updates. How will you fit this into your schedule?
Well, thanks to my ten years of experience, you know, with the various committees and boards that I've had as part of, I check my emails on periodically throughout the day anyways, so I'm pretty familiar, familiar with time sensitivity for board decisions, reading materials is no issue. I'm also a policy person. I like to review things, I make notes on things, so I'm prepared to come to the board and make my opinion or whatever and address things. My scheduling is all entered into my calendar on my mobile device, so all board meetings are after regular business hours for my placement limit. I work Monday through Friday, eight to five, so I am available for all meetings. Myself and my children, we actively participate in community-related events. We arrive pretty early, so this wouldn't affect my schedule or my appearance.
And then Tyler, an average month for a school board member includes about two to five scheduled meetings and perhaps another three school or community-related activities. This is a long one to read over, I'm sorry. In addition, there's daily email correspondence, required readings and district updates. How will you fit this into your schedule?
I think I'd give required readings, that really, you know, gets the point home. But like what has been articulated already, you know, just in terms of time management and multitasking, you know, I'm no stranger to any of those. You know, I, I, my first full-time job, working 40 hours a week, I was also a full-time student and I successfully managed that for a number of years and graduated successfully and did a master's degree also working full-time. So, you know, I had multiple jobs at one time. In fact, what I taught here at, at Mount Pleasant, when I taught at the middle school, I was also working part-time at C M U, teaching there, so it's just sort of been my nature of what to, to, to have all these sorts of items in the fighter of the world. And so, you know, I certainly have the time before, so I work eight to five as well. Certainly have time in the morning, have, you know, pockets of time possibly during the day and then obviously evening, then I'll be available, but as Melissa said, you prioritize what you want to prioritize and this would certainly be perfect.
Thank you.
Shelley, an average month for a school board member includes about two to five scheduled meetings and perhaps another three school or community-related activities. In addition, there is daily email correspondence, required reading and district updates. How will you fit this into your schedule?
Thank you. As a mother with six children, of which all are gone and I'm thankful for that, and thirteen grandchildren with a new one on the way, I have been able, and a full-time job, I have been able to use my schedules like my best friend on my calendar. So I like to be very organized, so I know exactly what is going on, where I'm expected to be and when I'm wherever it is that I need to be, I'm 110% focused on that. I have the availability to be able to check my emails regularly. I can also receive phone calls if there's an emergency situation that may arise. So I'm very flexible in that sense. I also understand that there's maybe travel for trainings or anything such. When I was on council, I traveled a lot. I mean, I hit almost 50 states. So, you know, I'm, I'm very flexible and thankfully I have a very loving, supportive husband that is there to make sure that I am still going standing up. But yeah, so I'm very flexible and, you know, I wouldn't have put my name in the running if I didn't think that I could commit to sitting in this board.
Thank you.
Christina, an average month for a school board member includes about two to five scheduled meetings and perhaps another three school or community-related activities. In addition, there is daily email correspondence, required readings and district updates. How will you fit this into your schedule?
Well, currently I'm working both a day shift full-time and a part-time night shift position. We're transferring to a full-time night shift position in the very near future, so I am not the normal Monday to Friday, eight to five, but with that, it's important in any component of my life that I've ever taken on that I always balance family and life and putting what my priorities are first and foremost and having that support at home to do so, as well as the support of my employment is something I have checked with my employer with prior to, to ensure that if a meeting ran over into my hours and did not, kind of went for it, then I did not infringe on my ability to maintain time requirements with this.
So that concludes the question portion. Now we can open it up. I think now we fall under new business, is that correct? So now we fall under new business where we kind of have a couple of different options. We can talk about our decision-making process, we can go back and forth, we can make a decision tonight, we can continue to decide what we would like to do. And so by doing that, it's open for discussion. Do we have the option to do some follow-up questions? I think so, as long as it is for everyone.
Oh, okay. That's helpful. Do you have follow-up questions?
I did, but it's not forever.
Well, I guess we can decide on whether to...
I mean, it's the last one. We've heard a lot and we've all seen resumes and cover letters, so I think we probably have enough.
I do think that any, any question you have for one candidate you would want to ask of all people.
Yeah, so that's, that's fine.
I would like to propose that in our discussion, if we can, it would be nice to be able to appoint someone today so that that person has a week to turn around knowing that that position is immediate. Our next board meeting is next Monday and so instead of dragging the process on, unless we are very divided here, I would suggest that we try to get to a consensus tonight.
I'm also very much in favor of kind of, I would rather spend a little extra time talking plain, but push this into another meeting.
It is a clarifying point, we're under a state law to be a window of time to be possible, appoint somebody and window ends October 2019.
And also under state law, we can't talk about this amongst ourselves, this happening in public, so.
So I'd like to say thank you everybody. Excellent answers from all of you. I'm very impressed. It's a very hard thing to do to step forward and to have people ask you questions about your systems and your beliefs and your family. That's part of the role of a school board member. You're asked that question a lot, grocery store, gas station, many, many places. And so thank you. It's a best thing to kind of break for you to step up in the community to do that. Especially since a lot of what the board does, that means that they're public and in the news and they attract, makes it even more difficult to do that. So first I'd like to thank all of you for taking this time and helping us go through this process because it's also not easy for us to have these conversations and we're uncomfortable as we're talking about you and part of you in a public space.
I'm, I'm going to agree Tim. Thank you so much for every single one of you, for your time, your thoughtful answers. I know this took some preparation. It's public, it's televised and that brings a whole kind of sweet feelings and I was just so proud that we had this kind of animal equality of applicants for an appointed position and I thought it was so uplifting. So regardless of what happens tonight, I wanted to hear that and we appreciate your time.
I'm going to add third, what Emily means and add Jimmy Wood. And I, unless I'm mistaken, we have the largest population of indigenous learners in our district, the state of Michigan, is that correct? So.
It's a suitcase memory.
So I feel, I'm just going to get the ball rolling. I feel like it's, it's time for us to have a member of the Saginawjewatnay tribe on our board. And I am so grateful that we have multiple applicants from the Saginaw, from the sovereign nation, the Saginawjewatnay tribe here tonight. We've spoken for years about our wish to have someone representing the tribe on this board and I'm so thankful that we have three that would very well represent the tribe with us so we can really bridge the gap, the education gap that we are seeing.
Yeah, I agree with Shelley that, you know, I appreciate so much what the tribe does for our community and I am all for, you know, strengthening that relationship.
I agree. I feel that this is such an opportunity for us as a community to have someone from the tribe and I know it's uncomfortable to discuss to you guys in front of you, but we got to start, so we're going to start. And I, I feel strongly with this, I like, it's kind of that perfect balance between what she brings, her system of knowledge and her leadership background. I think that... I think that would be a very good way for us to do that. And so that's right now where I would spend.
Okay, I'm looking at it, I agree, adding up. Tribal number is great, but I look at what, who is going to bring something to the board that we don't already have? Okay, who's going to bring another point of view? Who's going to bring, you know, a different perspective? My two top ones are Shelley and Christina. You guys, in my opinion, blew it away today. You brought different opinions. You brought, I just really like the ideas that you were talking about and I like the backgrounds that you're coming from. If we're definitely going tribal, then I would definitely go with Shelley. But either of those two, I think, bring something to this board that we don't already have. And I think that's really important.
And also I'd like to link those to this. It's very hard stepping into a board role as that board role has already been rolling along. And so having that kind of past board experience is a great value because it's, you have to learn to swim very, very quickly in a very challenging environment. So I think having a lot of past experience with board, board structures, community structures, especially in the educational area, I think is a great value. As you try to step into a new role, just because of all the laws, the cycles, there's this lot there that may get much more difficult if you don't have those experiences, that, that knowledge. So as I, from my perspective, highlight that, we have a lot of that skill here, which is, I think, is quite impressive. So, but just to highlight.
If my first choice were what it's worth, and I would vote with me for Melissa, I think that she brings an incredible wealth of experience and knowledge that would be transformative and have a standing on. She's talking about relationships, she's talking about incremental change. I think that it would be a lot to have.
Melissa would also be my choice for all those reasons. And I have the opportunity to work with Melissa professionally, the utmost responsibility.
So I think listening to everything that is being said, I think any one of you would be a great addition to the board. And that's kind of one of the tricky things, is that we were given such a large applicant pool and then we were able to narrow that down a little bit and have you all come in. I think thinking among those lines of what the board really does need, thinking about the ideas of wanting to bridge, or continue, I should say, to build bridges within the tribal nation. And then as well as looking at where we are at and having someone come in knowledgeable. And we have that within U5 as well, is that you do have an understanding, each one of you have been a part of some board in general, and that you are coming in with that knowledge base. So thinking among those lines, we can do one of two things. We can either each individually say who we would like, or someone can make a motion and then we can vote. Do we have that we vote on Melissa Isaac for this appointed position?
He's second.
Okay, so all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
And so at this time, do we move it to Rock? Or do we know that there is a, you can do a little call for her to clarify the vote?
We thought there was a need to, I don't know if there was a need to.
All right, so with that, the board does approve Melissa Isaac as the addition to the Mount Pleasant Public School Board of Education. So, and that is with a five to one vote.
Congratulations.
Welcome.
Sweet bunch, everybody. I will do my best to jump in and serve our district and our community. Appreciate your confidence.
Thank you to the other four as well. It's really great to have this many amazing applicants and this many people who are this engaged and knowledgeable about our district. So thank you very much.
Yes, thank you very much. Appreciate you taking your time tonight and being here with us. Does anyone have anything additional that they would like to say this evening or have to share? Not seeing anything, I call this meeting a jerk.